For an emergency, please note the exits on either side of the chambers and proceed down the stairs. Bathrooms are located out the door to my left, women's room to the right, men's room to the left. Please note that the council has rules of decorum for our meetings and hearings. We ask that respect be shown to all, whether they serve on the council, on the staff, or are here as public members. When your name is called, you will have three minutes to address the council. So please do sign up on the sign up at the podium if you have not done so already. So again, you'll have three minutes to address the council. There will be no debate with the council. I will not only have the clock running, but I will also give a 30 second verbal warning. I am now calling this common council public hearing on the eminent domain procedure for the acquisition of certain real property located in the city of Kingston to order at 7:01 PM. We will actually start the hearing with a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Bartek Stardi, the director of housing initiatives for the city of Kingston. I am here to review the proposed location and public use to be served by the public project on behalf of the city of Kingston. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to the eminent domain procedure law in order to inform the public and to review the public use to be served by the public project and the impact on the environment and neighborhood near the public project. In accordance with the eminent domain procedure law, notice of this public hearing was duly published in the Daily Freeman on October 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. As provided in the notice of public hearing, persons unable to attend this public hearing or persons in attendance of the public hearing may also submit to the city prior to the end of the public hearing any written statement or other related documents relating to the proposed public project. Such written statements and/or documents will be part of the public record of this hearing. Comments received after the close of this public hearing will not be considered. Copies of the map outlining the proposed location of the public project, figure one, and a description of the property are available at the table before me. The real property being considered for acquisition by the city and the subject of this public hearing consists collectively of approximately three and a half acres located in the city of Kingston, consisting of 42 individual parcels. The full list of these parcels is included in the public hearing notice and is also available at the table before me. The three and a half acres is a predominantly underutilized parking lot and otherwise an undeveloped field. The 42 parcels are collectively referred to during this public hearing as the proposed site. To the city's knowledge, there are three owners within the 42 parcels: JAF Development, Hudson Land Development Corp., and Roundout Landing at Strand. Records indicate that collectively, these three owners pay approximately $3,600 in school, county, and city taxes annually for the 42 parcels. The proposed site has seen better days. Roundout was once a thriving port town that attracted immigrants of diverse backgrounds and was a center of economic importance along the Hudson River. Most recently, this proposed site was once a vibrant and diverse neighborhood and contained a rich stock of commercial buildings, storefronts, and multifamily structures. During the federally funded urban renewal era of the 1960s, the proposed site was part of the Broadway East project. In total, records indicate that close to 500 of these structures were demolished, displacing many residents of this integrated working class area. In total, 361 families, 104 individuals, and 94 businesses were displaced as part of the Broadway East project. A third of the families displaced were black, even though Kingston was 96% white in the 1960 census. The federal funding that facilitated the removal of buildings and people did not extend to funding the redevelopment of the proposed site. As such, in 1988, the city of Kingston sold the proposed site to JAF Development with the expectation that they would be redeveloped within 36 months, according to the urban renewal plan, which under amendment number 11, adopted by the common council on May 7, 1985, labeled much of the proposed site a residential limited commercial mixed-use area. This allowed residential and limited commercial office uses for the development and revitalization of the historic Roundout area. Specifically, it allowed uses that included dwellings for four or more families, businesses and professional offices, retail stores, banks, and service businesses, and mixed-use buildings. Yet, the proposed site remains vacant and underutilized despite its history and central location in Kingston's Roundout neighborhood. No real or significant progress has ever been made in redeveloping the site, despite the fact that it was sold by the city 36 years ago and that the proposed site was mostly cleared almost 60 years ago. The owners have had ample opportunity to redevelop and repurpose the underutilized and predominantly vacant proposed site. The Roundout neighborhood is one of Kingston's core urban neighborhoods and remains walkable with a rich mix of retail uses. The area surrounding the proposed site has seen significant public and private investment. It is served by Ulster County's UCAT bus system. It contains a number of municipal services, including the Roundout Neighborhood Center and City Court. It is nearby key community anchor institutions such as the Maritime Museum, the Rear Center, and the Arts Society of Kingston. It is nearby the Kingston Green Line, a system of trails that supports non-motorized transportation as well as a waterfront promenade. The city has secured key grant funding to continue to support investment in the neighborhood, including the $21.7 million federal raise grant, the city's largest infrastructure award in history. The city has applied to the federal government's reconnecting communities grant program. If successful, this will support a planning study to redesign the four-lane 9W arterial that is adjacent to the proposed site. Sadly, there has been no economic development at the proposed site despite all these investments. The ongoing vacancy of these three acres depresses the economic vitality of Roundout and worsens housing availability and access for all Kingston residents. Indeed, the current state of the proposed site impacts the ability of the downtown area to take advantage of the economic development and housing potential that is being capitalized on in other areas of the city. The residents and businesses of the city, especially those in the Roundout, deserve better. The time for action has long been overdue. The city feels that the predominantly vacant and underutilized proposed site is ripe for repurposing under allowable uses. Under the city's zoning code, the proposed site is zoned partially as T5 Main Street and partially as T5 Neighborhood. The intent of the T5 Main Street transact is "a walkable, vibrant urban main street serving multiple neighborhoods and the city with commercial, retail, entertainment, and civic uses, public transportation, and small-to-large footprint, medium-to-high-density building types." The intent of the T5 Neighborhood transact is "to provide a variety of housing choices in small-to-large footprint, medium-to-high-density building types, which reinforce the walkable nature of the neighborhood, support neighborhood-serving retail and service uses adjacent to the zone, and support public transportation alternatives." The city's comprehensive plan, adopted 2015, recommends the Roundout neighborhood to be one of Kingston's core urban areas, "comprised of mixed-use centers, multifamily residential incorporated with ground-floor retails." The proposed site is also part of the city's local waterfront revitalization plan, which calls the Roundout "the most significant neighborhood within the city's coastal area" and calls for the city to "encourage development in the urban renewal areas since infrastructure and public services are generally adequate to support future land uses and development." The proposed site is not in the Roundout Historic District, but is adjacent to the Historic District. However, the kind of development envisioned would complement the Historic District's rich legacy of commercial buildings and homes. Further, based on a review of the city's rental vacancy rate and other housing conditions, City of Kingston Common Council declared a citywide housing emergency in August 2022 that is still in effect. Redeveloping the site would allow the city to meet the strong demand for housing. In addition, it would provide the opportunity for residents displaced in the 1960s to actually return to the neighborhood, should they choose to. The proposed acquisition of the proposed site is required for a certain public project, consisting of the redevelopment of the predominantly vacant, underutilized proposed site. Specifically, we believe the proposed site will support approximately 200 housing units, organized as a walkable urban neighborhood with approximately 30,000 square feet of commercial and nonprofit space. This would further the intent of the T5 Main Street and T5 Neighborhood transacts for medium-to-high-density mixed-use development. Near-residential density in this area could also support neighborhood-serving retail, much of which was lost during urban renewal. This public project is wholly consistent with the city of Kingston's zoning code and planning documents. The project is consistent with the kind of development currently present in the Roundout neighborhood and will help the city meet the demand for residential and commercial spaces. The existing infrastructure supports new development on the proposed site. The public project will further the public purpose of providing additional economic development and affordable housing opportunities, promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public, and advancing the general prosperity and economic welfare of the residents of the city. The project will decrease the negative impacts associated with the presence of large vacant parcels within one of the city's primary business districts. The city will conduct a full environmental review pursuant to and in accordance with Article 8 of the New York Environmental Conservation Law and associated regulation promulgated thereafter, known as SEAKER, with respect to the public project. It is contemplated that within 90 days of the conclusion of this public hearing, the city will make public its determination and findings in accordance with eminent domain procedure law and SEAKER as applicable regarding the proposed acquisition of the proposed site in connection with the public project. I'll close with some final thoughts. The city must act above this property for the public good, expand housing opportunities, and expand economic opportunities. We owe it to every resident and business that was displaced in the 1960s to redevelop this site. This concludes my statement on behalf of the city. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Again, just a reminder, after your name is called, you must adhere to the three minutes. First speaker, please. Kristin Virgin. And actually, the microphone is probably off. There is a button that you have to hold. So if you want to just test that first.
Testing.
Great.
As a business owner at the Roundout, I'm both concerned and confused about how a 200-unit complex would benefit the downtown waterfront. For example, the most important being parking. Parking is a huge issue on a regular basis, but when you add in the events and festivals, which generate a lot of revenue to the waterfront, it becomes a big problem. Adding a 200-unit complex with an estimated 300 additional vehicles is a huge concern. There are currently four unoccupied storefronts plus a vacant visitor's center, which could be used for promoting tourism as well as providing a good use of rental space. So the question remains, how would this 200-unit complex benefit the Roundout? We already have a parking issue, vacant storefronts, and a fragile infrastructure with failing pipes and sewer issues. I ask that you please reconsider this development and vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Victoria Jonay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. Can you hear me?
Yeah, when everybody comes up, if you just speak right into the microphone.
All right. Don't start my three minutes yet. My essay is called "Historical and Responsible, Not Hysterical and Reckless." I live at 70 Broadway, and I come before the city council tonight to voice my utter disappointment in the proposed eminent domain takeover of the property at the Roundout on the Strand, a beautiful green space oasis in the Roundout neighborhood. The city is proposing 200 mixed-use housing development, which raises many concerns. I and the concerned residents of Kingston who have signed a petition on this very subject would like to see historical and responsible development in this special area. The townhouses that were built in 1989 after the disastrous urban removal effort are a prime example of what I'm talking about. Although not original to the neighborhood, they were built in the historical aesthetic that the neighborhood is known and loved for. My concerns are as follows. The proposed monolithic cubicle five-story building for the corner of Garrigan and Broadway is a prime example of hysterical, not historical, development, which completely disregards the historical value of the neighborhood. It looks cheap, ugly, and void of any character as the picture shows, and is situated right at the entrance of the Roundout, diminishing its charm and grace to the area from the very start. The proposed 200 units would increase the amount of vehicles, up to two vehicles per housing unit, up to 400 cars, and there is no sustainable plan for parking space to fit this tremendous volume of cars. As we are all aware, the parking situation on Broadway is already at capacity, especially on weekends and during nice weather and then many events that take place at Gallo Park. The restaurants and stores depend on parking spaces for tourists who pour into the Roundout on weekends. The addition of up to 400 additional cars will only wreak havoc on the businesses who want to visit their establishments, the people who want to visit their establishment. This is an example of reckless, not responsible development. Creating more storefronts will only add to the depressing, empty storefront look of the street. Let's focus on making sure every existing storefront is filled and thriving before adding new ones. This is the responsible thing to do. Otherwise, it's just reckless. A recent water main break a few days ago on Broadway is a reminder that our infrastructure and utilities in the areas are old and crumbling. How much more negative impact will this massive housing development have on our aging pipeline? Again, rest-
30 seconds.
reckless, not responsible. The city should focus on preserving as much green space on the property as it is. The field is home to people in the surrounding apartment buildings that walk their dog, kids that play in the field. Nobody has ever stopped them from coming in and using the field for recreation. I propose that maybe a public park, a playground. The area has no playground. We have a promenade, but we have no playground for children.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Sharon Boyd. So, my name is Sharon Boyd. I live on Broadway. I had a nice speech prepared for you, but I noticed nobody's listening, so I'm gonna wing it. Yes, we had a major water main break on Friday. Six hours without water and two days of chocolate-colored water. We still are not drinking that failed infrastructure. Then we have Kingston Hospital. Oh, you know that building right there. Yes, it's sitting more than half-empty. So, when you want to pick a place, let's pick something that already has 200 bathrooms. How about that? The strain on the infrastructure is amazing. We have really old gas mains, water mains, electrical grid, all kinds of stuff, and if I spend another six hours without water, I'm gonna be up here taking a shower. Yeah, it's not fun. This is the oldest section of town, and you are gonna ruin it by putting a big old complex, 200 units, not just a little 42, 50 units, 200 units. Some of them are two and three bedrooms, if I understand. So how many people is that gonna be in there? How many cars to clog up Broadway? How much stuff are you gonna put in a two-mile radius, aside from the two projects we already have? Now we want one that's gonna contain 200 units. It's unconscionable. It's just wrong, and I'm urging this council to use their common sense and vote no on this proposal. It is not right. We also have a big mall sitting empty besides a anchor store of Target. Now, our development man should have found out about that one, should have found out about the Kingston City Hospital sitting half-vacant. All opportunities that are right at your doorstep, literally, and the grant for $22 million Chuck Schumer says is for streets, sidewalks, paths, bike paths, and-
30 seconds.
-open spaces. That's a green open space, one of the last few green open spaces in downtown. In the Historic District, you can call it what you want. It's on the Broadway corridor. And I'd also gonna submit 178 signatures against the project.
Next speaker, please.
Anthony Bella?
Bielke. It's a tough one. Good evening, all. My name's-
Can you just move the microphone up?
Sure, absolutely. My name's Anthony Bielke with White Menosha and Hannah represent the landowners here. We submitted earlier today written comments to the board, which I have several extra copies of, but not enough for all. We just have several procedural objections that we are raising and preserving. First, to the extent that the resolution of the common council, which set forth this public hearing, delegated the authority for this public hearing and for the findings and determinations under the EDPL to a hearing officer as opposed to a decision of the common council, we believe that's beyond the authority of the common council to delegate their authority in that way. Oh, sorry. Secondly, with regards to SEAKER, to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this is the sort of action which requires SEAKER review. Encourage that during the presentation by the director of OHI that it sounds like a SEAKER review is going to be done. However, none has been completed to this point, at least based on the public record. Our office submitted a FOIL request about a week and a half ago for any documentation relating to this project. We received 11 pages, which mostly consisted of a PowerPoint presentation with no actual findings, no actual SEAKER analysis. And so to the extent that the common council believes that they're going to have their decision in this matter within 90 days of the close of this hearing, we simply think that that's not enough time to do the sufficient SEAKER analysis here. And finally, with regards to the finding of underutilization, we've simply seen nothing in the public record that suggests that there is actually underutilization, that it's the burden of the condom nor in an EDPL proceeding to determine that there is a public purpose, such as economic underutilization. We simply don't think that there's anything in the record to support that. And finally, to the extent that, and this is attached to our submission as exhibit A, several letters that we received as property owners, which we interpret as an EDPL Section 303 offer of advanced payment, we believe that those are deficient and that they do not put forward any amount for that payment, do not suggest, do not as-
30 seconds.
Oh, thank you. As 303 requires indicates that is the highest approved appraisal. And so to the extent that that is also something that could be an argument raised in an EDPL 207 challenge, we're preserving that argument as well. Thank you. I can pass up extra copies if necessary.
Can somebody take that? And we could make more copies if there are enough. And we could make more copies if there are enough. Yes. Next speaker, please. Thank you, Michael. Was there another sheet that we put out there? I think people did. Yeah. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Lancer.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Lancer. I moved downtown here to the condos in 2009, but grew up locally as well. I want you, I want my voice, my opinion, including a few objections towards this proposed plan. For one, I appreciate the open space and the beauty of this historic downtown area. It's a major part of the reason I decided to purchase my condo here. I worry about the congestion and crowding. A side note is that I very much appreciate and enjoy the festivals, events, and traditions that we hold here annually. I just wouldn't want to live in crowds daily. My second concern are the retail and commercial storefronts. From this end of Broadway to the uptown area, we have countless vacant storefronts and apartments, some of which have been that way for some time now. Whether these locations can't be filled or the business fails, who knows? Why would we need more here downtown? I am also curious about a potential walkway connecting the different parts of downtown here, should this project be approved, and curious about how tough maintenance issues can be resolved, specifically in the wintertime. And even with a system in place for my condos, at least, it is already difficult to maintain, to manage through the days and nights of snow plowing. And how about emergency services and larger vehicles? I would rather share the space with things like new public sporting fails, parks, and more natural outdoor areas for the children and people of the city. Less congestion, less vacant retail storefront windows, more beauty, more history, and more community. These are merely a few concerns and opinions of mine and many of my neighbors, also of many of my neighbors, family, and friends. I would add the use of eminent domain should strictly be for emergency situations, not developing in a small city like Kingston. I strongly urge the city council to vote no to this extreme community-altering project. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Carl Brown.
Hi, my name is Carl Brown. I'm a resident of the old Roundout. I have nine generations in this town. And for, I hear everybody what they're saying. This is an emergency right now. It really is. We have a housing crisis in Kingston. People can't afford to live here. I'll tell you what, I just talked to an old resident that was on Chambers Street. You don't know anything about that. That's ground zero where they're going to be doing the building area. They, brother and sister, couldn't afford to live in Kingston. They had to move out of here, being displaced from urban renewal. And now they live in Marlborough. They make about $45,000 a year. I just met them at the voting booth. I told them, I says, you know what? You have a chance to come back to Kingston and maybe get an apartment to live back on the street that you guys got displaced from. Their eyes lit up. The only problem with that, they make $45,000 a year. Gentrification is real. It's real. People that, Nobles, Browns, Shabbits, Schecters, all family members are being displaced out of Kingston. Because you guys have the power not to go by what the average income is, why don't you go by what people's really bringing home in their salary and do it as an aggregate for five years? And let them pay an affordable rent. I know we're talking about affordable sites right here, okay? But think about providing a home for people that got displaced that had no choice. You guys have a choice. Urban Renewal 1.0, had you's been living there right now, you don't have a choice. They just tear it down, and you guys move on about your way. And I heard what you said, oh, they need to get a proper value of their home? They didn't have that choice back in 1960s. They just took the property. Urban Renewal 2.0, which I call this right now, is providing a housing crisis and providing a place for people to come back here to live and to dwell, especially to displaced people. And we need to give at least 60% of those people affordable homes, not 30%. I know what you said, Bartek. It's not working. It needs to be 60%, 120 homes, 361 families displaced? That's over 1,500 people that were Kingstonians. I want to keep our Kingstonians here. I don't want to have them moving out, moving all over the doggone place. You're not looking at the real picture, guys. It should not only be providing homes, it should be fighting affordability for the homes, for the Kingston families that built this history in the Roundout.
Thank you. Your time is up. That is all that we have signed up, but any, but we don't allow people to speak twice. But is there anybody who has not spoken who would like to speak? Just raise your hands. Dennis?
So, thank you. Is this loud enough? Can everybody hear me? My name is Dennis Doyle. I'm the playing director for Olster County. And I want to thank the council and those in the audience for the opportunity to speak tonight with respect to the proposal. I want to put this in some context. I know that you've heard this before and some history, but I think it's important to sort of repeat it. And that is, is that the impetus behind the project is literally found in the original discussion that happened over 60 years ago with respect to urban renewal. The, most of the historic Roundout District was essentially removed at that particular point in time. Some critics have called this urban renewal misnamed and mismanaged, and some have called it what has been referred to as reckless lunacy or reckless idiocy. The city has spent nearly two decades, if not longer, rebuilding the Roundout, investing both private money and encouraging, and investing both public money and encouraging private money to invest in the Roundout. They have recently essentially received a substantial amount of money to weave the waterfront and make it a walkable community. As been discussed, the project as proposed is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the city zoning statute. And it's consistent, quite frankly, with what's happened in the Roundout in the past as it relates to the removal and what happened in the Roundout in the past with respect to the city's investment in its waterfront. The county's housing action plan, completed in 2023, takes a good look at essentially the need for housing in the county and notes that 12% of owners and 29% of renters are severely burdened with respect to housing costs. This situation has not gotten better. In point of fact, it's gotten worse. Confronting this housing crisis, the city has essentially made several bold moves, including adopting a form-based code, allowing accessory dwelling units, promoting and accepting housing developments on Golden Hill, which the county has supported, and also the developments of housing with respect to the projects on Broadway and elsewhere in the city.
30 seconds.
Thank you. As the city has looked to opportunities to meet its housing needs, it seems most natural that it would turn its gaze upon the major vacant parcels associated with urban renewal and that these remaining portions that are under discussion in this public hearing have remained vacant for over 50 years. I do not believe that eminent domain is the first choice, nor do I believe it's the only choice. And I believe that if the city does decide to move forward, it has a duty to the owners and a duty to the residents to essentially work with them.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody who hasn't finished their speech, you're more than welcome to send comments through our normal channel, which is the email. Elisa Tintz, your clerk, if you would like to send comments that you weren't able to get through. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? That is correct. You already spoke, though. No, nope. The public hearing is just for us to listen. Anybody else who has not spoken who would like to speak? Is there anybody else who has not spoken who would like to speak? Hearing and seeing no one else, I will call this public hearing adjourned at 19:36 PM. Thank you all for coming out.